Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez, Commissioner Michael Pacheco, Commissioner Bobby Carrillo, Commissioner Ramiro Caballero,
President.
Commissioner Daniel Chavez,
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina,
President.
And Commissioner Lisa Flores.
President.
We do have a call.
Thank you, Hilda.
Do you want a motion for excusing? Oh, he's come? Okay.
He's running for minutes late. One B, Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation by Tensy Martinez.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. As a part of the Family Police Department, I, Chaplain Tensy Martinez, pray a special blessing on our mayor Hernandez and our city commission and all its decisions to the betterment of our city afar. Let us bow our heads. Today is a special day in our city, in our city's history. We present in gratitude our new police chief Juan Gonzalez and our judge Juan Biescas. Father God, our prayer is that these new assignments be blessed by your hands, that you provide them with protection, courage, knowledge, understanding, and of your wisdom, so that they may proceed to make the best decisions for our community. May our city leaders always go to you in prayer when things get tough. This new journey of service and commitment will require a daily walk with you. Father, I lift them up so that you may embrace the lives that are present here today and that you may give us peace and may accompany all of us. Father, may we always walk in integrity, honesty, and dedication while serving our community. Bless our families, our leadership, Father. We also give our mayor and commissioners a continued dedication and commitment, Father, that they have had until now, to our city afar. I ask this in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Ghost. Amen.
Okay, moving on to item two, Proclamations. We do have two A, proclamation proclaiming June 2023 as National Cancer Survivor Month. And we should have Mr. Liscano here. Do you have any representatives from DHR or just you?
We do.
Okay, perfect. If you guys can please join him at the podium. And Commissioner Caballero will be reading the proclamation for you guys.
Just really quick, we just want to make sure that we thank you, the city afar, on behalf of DHR Health. Again, my name is Mario Liscano. I'm the Administrator of Corporate Affairs. And I'm blessed to be here with the advanced cancer care team that deals directly with not only our patients, our families, but our survivors. During this National Cancer Survivor Month, they are having plenty of awareness events. And we're just blessed that this city is so proactive in making sure that the information is passed out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Whereas a cancer survivor is defined as anyone living with a history of cancer from the moment of diagnosis through the remainder of life. And there are more than 18 million cancer survivors in America. And whereas since the number of cancer survivors is projected to increase to 22.2 million by 2030, increased access to effective cancer treatments, quality survivorship care, and necessary cycle social resources, especially among minorities and the medically underserved, must be a top priority in our community. Whereas the great city of FAR has a valuable, dynamic cancer survivor population. And whereas hundreds of communities worldwide will be celebrating life during the month of June. And whereas on behalf of the people of FAR, FAR Texas, I salute all cancer survivors and those who support them and urge all citizens to join this exuberant celebration of life. Now, therefore, I, Ramiro Caballero, representing Ambrosio Hernandez, mayor of the city of FAR, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim June 2023 as National Cancer Survivors Month. Thank you.
We do have a survivor that is here to make sure that she addresses you all and also want to make sure that our team is being recognized as well.
I am Lidia Molina and I work for DHR Cancer Center. And I am a survivor of cancer. So just want to say a few words. Cancer Survivor Day recognizes and celebrates those who have battled cancer and won the fight in order to bring hope to those who are still battling this disease. If you have been affected by cancer in any way, June is the month that we can come together to celebrate all those who have battled cancer. Incorporating healthy habits such as physical activity and the importance of early detection that can help reduce cancer incidence. DHR Health is excited to host the Purple Project 5K, a uniting run for all cancer events. DHR Health would like to encourage cancer survivors, their families, all those who want to make a difference in cancer to participate in this beautiful celebration of life and hope. This event will take place on Sunday, June 25th, at 8:00 a.m. at the Edinburgh Municipal Park. Please be aware that our registration deadline is Tuesday, June 13th. To register online, please visit dhrhealth.com/purpleproject5k or call 956-362-2114. We look forward to you joining us in this fun-filled community event, which will bring walkers and runners of all ages together in an effort to honor cancer survivors and their families while raising awareness of this disease that affects so many people. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Molina, for coming up. I know it's not an easy thing. My mother's cancer survivor as well. It was so hard, so thank you. And thank you, DHR, for doing everything that you do for the community, especially for cancer survivors.
Thank you.
If you can please come up. Okay, moving on to item two B, proclamation proclaiming June 2023 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month. And this proclamation will be received by Alan Cantu. He's with the police department and some other members from the police department. And Commissioner Pacheco will be reading the proclamation for you guys. Coming up, guys.
Any words, Mr. Cantu, before we...
Hi. Thank you once again, guys, for having us here, like, you know, in the middle of the year. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you for seeing us. Elder abuse, it's a big problem. We want to take care of our elderly. And, you know, there's different things that happen with them, physical, emotional, financial. And sometimes they don't have the resources and the need, like, in order for them to get assistance. And usually, we are the ones that end up, or the officers are the ones that end up going over there and, you know, checking the scene to see, like, if they need any assistance and things like that. And at least we're able to accommodate them by helping them with emergency protection orders, assistance with any crime victims and things like that, in order to facilitate the process in case that they need any other assistance and things like that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Whereas older adults and people with disabilities of diverse backgrounds contribute to the well-being of this city by working, caregiving, volunteering, and actively preserving custom rituals and traditions. And whereas we age, we build momentum by accumulating knowledge, experience, insight, and wisdom that can be shared to enrich our community. And whereas abuse of older adults and people with disabilities is a community concern affecting thousands of people across Texas. And whereas in 2022, there were 119,448 completed cases of elderly and disabled persons abuse in Texas, of which 84,655 were confirmed. And whereas abuse against older adults and people with disabilities is grossly under-reported because of social stigma, embarrassment, and fear. And whereas adult abuse affects men and women of all income and ability levels, all cultural and ethnic backgrounds, in all communities. And whereas the city of FAR encourages everyone to join the elder abuse awareness events, it is important to strengthen our efforts to prevent, report, and address elderly abuse. And therefore, I, Michael Pacheco, on behalf of Ambrosio Hernandez, mayor of the city of FAR Texas, by virtue of authority vested in me and behalf of the city commission, do hereby proclaim June 2023 as National Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Congratulations.
Commission, just for the record, Joel Robles, I'm the Assistant Chief of Police. But hey, before we take the photo, I just wanted, I didn't want the rest of the team to go unrecognized. You know, Nancy, Josie, Mr. Garza, and Sergeant Garcia. This is the team that provides support to our police personnel. They're the ones that take all the calls from our victims of crime and domestic violence. And every month, you see them, they're up here. They're doing the work that they need for this community. And just, I wanted to make sure that they didn't go unrecognized. Thank you very much for having us here.
Thank you, guys, for all you do. If you can come up. Come up for a group photo, please. Hilda, let the record show that we're gonna go out of order on the agenda. So I'm gonna skip over to item number five, City Manager's Report. Five A, there is a presentation in your packets for the the liquid tax collection report. And we do have Carla Saavedra in the audience, in case you guys have any questions. Hearing none. Five B, also in your packet, you have your city manager's report. And we do have Maria Ranjell in the audience, in case you guys have any questions on a particular project. And hearing none, we will move on to five C, City Events of Interest. Mr. Cannon, if you can join us. We do have Andrew Cannon from RGV MPO, who has some great news to share with the city and the community as a whole. So, welcome.
Afternoon, everybody. Glad to be here. Great day for FAR. I generally get really nervous, so many law enforcement officials behind me, but we'll work through this. I believe we have a slide. Out of the new transportation bill, we have what they call a carbon reduction program. And it's a new dedicated funding source that's going directly to the MPOs through the states for reducing carbon emissions and trying to lower our carbon footprint on the world. Some of these projects can be smart lighting, LED lights, replacement of streetlights to LEDs, signalization, which we already worked with city on. And there's some of that covered here, we'll talk about. And then one project that the city of FAR had that just was right there with it was, we're changing it from the truck staging area over at the FAR bridge to a parking lot. And federal highways loves that project. They love the idea of it because far too often, we have too many 18-wheelers sitting out on the side of the road or somewhere waiting to get where they're going. They're just pumping all that diesel emissions into the air. So this is working out perfect for us. It's $11.4 million. The board took action on it last week to award to the city of FAR. There's an 80/20 match to it, but that's really great news and that project's ready to move forward. We got new cost estimates in, so we're pretty excited about that moving forward. And we think that's a great project, especially with all the expansion work that's going on with the bridge. Also, as a part of that is $900,000, I think that's $45,000,000, Massa Menos, on light signalization. Next slide, I don't know who has it, I apologize.
No, you're fine. Is that it?
No, ma'am, the other one. Yes, ma'am. There we go. As we can see there, the city of FAR, what we're looking at for a city is around a subtotal of $170,000 in addition to go to the city for some light synchronization. We have a consultant that comes through the region. We do this biannually. We've done this before with the city of FAR, before the board set aside a million dollars and we broke that up between Mission, Edinburgh, McAllen, and FAR. Those cities above the $50,000 mark, because once you reach that threshold, then the cities become obligated to take care of the signalization for the city. Anything below that, TechDOT still maintains. So driving out the system and becoming familiar with it and doing a hands-on inventory with our consultant, we identified $98,000 in loops. For anybody who's not familiar, they're the little cuts that you see at the intersections in the pavement. There's a loop in the ground. Generally, they're magnetic, sometimes pressure-driven. It picks up your vehicle to let the signal box know, hey, there's a car here, please turn green. That's why it's such a good project. Also, some cabinets, some new control cabinets that we all see on the corner sometimes, has all the brains of the outfit in there. And $5,500 for GPS clocks. And those are essentially clocks that go inside the cabinets that every night at midnight, they zero out. So they maintain that signalization and that timing for those corridors. Because what we want to do, for example, on Cage, if you're coming southbound, once we get to business, we want those lights to turn green as you move southward. And then we're hoping they do the same thing, turning red going southward and then the opposite, coming northward. This is great for safety, safety of movement in people, and for emissions control. Because in a lot of areas that don't have these loops or control boxes, if you come through at 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night, sometimes you're just sitting there at the light because nothing is detecting you. So you're just sitting there and you're just pumping it into the air and you're waiting for it to turn green. So we're slowly working on those improvements to try to do that. So those were really the two things I had today I wanted to bring and just let the city know about. We think it's a pretty exciting time. So around a half a million, a little over half a million dollars in funding coming to FAR to help address some of these things and help out with some of the expansion that's taking place on the bridge. So we're pretty excited about that. And I know the mayor had a lot to do with it at the meeting as well. So just wanted to share the good news. I'd be glad to answer any questions if there are any. I love an easy room. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, also under City Manager's Report, just wanted to inform the community that the library has already started their summer reading program, June 5th through July 7th. So make sure you call the Library Children's Department if you're interested in participating. Parks and Recreation has also started all their summer activities. They do have a summer camp along with movies downtown and at different parks that they'll be featuring. And all of this information will be pushed out through our social media platforms and also the City of FAR Parks and Recreation Facebook account. We do have on June 24th, a Sneaker Fest coming up. It's a show and collective expo for sneakers. It's the first time that we'll have something like that. And we're receiving a lot of traction for that, so we're excited about it. We do have Chamber, we'll be hosting their hub market days on Saturday, June 10th, from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. in downtown FAR. And also, we do have a video that we want to showcase for our finance department because they have received the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Once again, I think it's the 15th year. So you guys are ready.
The name of this award, this is called the Budget Presentation Distinguished Award. And it's from the Government Finance Officers Association. It's a national award and the city has earned it for 15 years in a row. When I heard the news that we got the award, that the city of FAR and finance got the award, I actually felt pretty proud because it represents a team effort and it's a recognition, a highly national recognition. Cities across the nation and even Canada can apply. It represents team effort. It's a process of five to six months and it's a compilation of all the work put together. It represents transparency, excellence, and it shows the dedication that our staff has to the residents of FAR. In the past years, we've had to compile and use traditional paper methods, but we have shifted to a digitalized software. We're going paperless, we're sustainable, and we're getting updated with technology. This award is not only for the finance department. This award goes to all the departments out there, to name a few. Purchasing, the bridge, OSE, administration, public utilities. Because again, it's a team effort and we are Team FAR.
Congratulations, Carla, to you and all your staff. And last but not least, we also have another video to invite everybody and remind everyone that our FAR Aquatic Center is now open. You're feeling the heat of summer? Our aquatic center is now open, so you guys are all welcome. And that's all I have for City Manager's Report. Moving on to item six, Consent Agenda. All items listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and uncontroversial by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion.
Any motion?
Motion to approve.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And according to section 551.071 to 551.287 of the Texas Government Code, the FAR Board of Commissioners hereby gives notice that it is convenient to execute session to discuss the items listed in the public portion of the meeting agenda. The time is now 4:22.
It's 5:23. Where did we leave off?
Seven, eight.
Seven.
Seven, eight.
No running, Bob.
Okay. Seven, Order and Resolution 7A. Consideration in action if any in ordinance appointing or reappointing a municipal judge. Adoption in one reading. This item supports SG or co-supports sound government and physical sustainability.
Mayor, currently, we do have Juan Biescas serving as the judge and staff is recommending reappointment.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Seven B, Consideration in action if any on ordinance appointing and reappointing general counsel and city attorney for the city of FAR. Adoption in one reading. This item supports SG, sound governance, and physical sustainability. As discussed in the second session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Seven C, Consideration in action if any on ordinance is to establish a fee to defray costs of collecting delinquent fines, fees, court costs, and other debts pursuant to Article 103.0031 of the Texas Government Code of Criminal Procedures, providing for severability and establishing an effective date. Adoption in one reading. This item supports, of course, SG, sound governance, and physical sustainability. Motion?
Motion to approve.
Taken.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Seven D, Consideration in action if any on resolution appointing a mayor pro temp and alternate mayor pro term. This item, sorry, this item supports SG, sound governance, and physical sustainability.
Move to appoint Daniel Chavez as mayor pro temp. He's the mayor pro temp for the city of FAR. And Bobby Carrillo is the alternate.
Second for Limpy? I mean, second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Seven E, Consideration in action if any on resolution appointing one member to the FAR Public Facilities Corporation Number One, Board of Directors. This item supports SG, sound governance, and physical sustainability.
And this item is to replace ex-commissioner Leazar Oaxardo and we are recommending appointment of Michael Pacheco.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Seven F, Consideration in action if any on resolution appointing, reappointing seven members of the FAR Public Facilities Corporation Number Three, Board of Directors. This item supports SG again, sound governance, and physical sustainability.
Also replacing ex-commissioner Oaxardo with Commissioner Pacheco and reappointing all of the other members.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Seven G, Consideration in action if any on a resolution appointing and reappointing four members to the Texas Increment Reinvestment Zone Number One. This item supports SG, sound governance, and physical sustainability.
Also to replace ex-commissioner Oaxardo with Commissioner Pacheco.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Seven H, Consideration in action if any on resolution appointing, reappointing four members to the Tax Increment Reinvestment Zone Number Two. This item supports SG, sound governance, and physical sustainability.
Same thing, to replace Commissioner Oaxardo with Pacheco and the other three members will be reappointed.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Seven I, Consideration in action if any on resolution appointing, reappointing four members to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. This item supports SG, sound governance, and physical sustainability.
On this item, we're reappointing three members, Hector Trevino, Erica Sharafa, and Rudy Beltran, and appointing a new member, Mario Liscano.
Okay.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Seven J, Consideration in action if any on resolution appointing, reappointing two members to the FAR Memorial Library Board. This item supports SG, sound governance, and physical sustainability.
The two board members wish to be reappointed, that's Anita Vela and Mary Q. Gonzalez.
So moved. Taken.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Seven K, Consideration in action if any on resolution ratifying amendment number one to the Advanced Funding Agreement, AFA, with the Texas Department of Transportation, OS TechDOT, for the dock expansion phase two, Control Section Job CSJ, number 0921-02-425. This item, of course, supports infrastructure. Any motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Seven L, Consideration in action if any on resolution ratifying amendment number one to the Advanced Funding Agreement, AFA, with the Texas Department of Transportation, TechDOT, for the Agriculture Laboratory and Training Center, AG Lab. Control Section Job CSJ, of course, number 0921-02-433. Of course, this item supports infrastructure.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I think this is gonna be a great thing for the city of FAR as far as having lab here at our international bridge. And it's gonna really improve operations in the bridge. So it's a great thing for the city of FAR.
It is, and I want to compliment Cindy Garza, of course, who's been helping us with funding and making sure that this project came to fruition. Because as you know, we'll be partnering with the local university to help make sure that they get their students educated in entomology, right? And help move our products across our international border. So congratulations to everybody. With that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Okay, let's see, we're eight A. Consideration in action if any authorizing the Bridge Department to participate in the 2023 Globe Produce and Floor Show, formerly known as the PMA, Texas Town Pavilion, for an amount not to exceed $27,000. This item supports EV, which is economic vitality.
Move for approval.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Eight B, Consultation with the Board of Commissioners on the city's organizational structure. This item supports SG, sound governance, and physical sustainability.
Is this consultation on action?
Okay, no action, thank you. Eight C, Consideration in action if any on the appointment of police chief. This item supports SSC, Safe and Secure Community.
So moved. Second.
Staff's recommend-
Yeah, this for appointment of-
Yep, let the city manager make some commentary, Professor.
I thought you were gonna say it was up for discussion. I wasn't sure if you were going in order, but go ahead.
Yes, sir.
As you guys know, Chief Gonzalez has been serving the city of FAR as acting police chief since September of last year. Chief, if you can come up. And he's done an excellent job with the police department and representing the city of FAR, the entire community. He's very well-liked in the community and also very well-liked in the city by his colleagues. So congratulations, Chief, for the day's here.
Thank you.
See, before we vote, do you want to make any comments to your family?
No, no, appreciate that, Mayor. First, just want to thank God for the opportunity just to be here and having this opportunity, this next step in my career. Want to introduce my wife. She's here with me, Griselle.
Sure. Hi.
Uh, I have my two daughters with me, uh, Camila and Isa as well. And, uh, just, uh, first and foremost, without the support of the family, I think it's just something that, uh, you know, you need throughout the journey and whatever profession you work at. So, uh, want to thank them for their continued support as, as I go onto this next path of my career. Also I have my parents here, FAR residents, a long time throughout the, uh, Juan and Yatris Gonzalez as well. Uh, I have my brother and his wife and his, uh, daughter also. A pleasure to call FAR home as well. And my, uh, sister and her kids as well, Melissa Springoff. Want to thank, uh, the commission, mayor, Ms. Alanis, for the opportunity about nine months ago, uh, to, uh, continue to move forward in our department. Uh, I also want to thank, uh, the fellow directors that we have that I've been, you know, blessed to work with these last nine months. It's, it's something where you need the support from the team and here and the team FAR brings it and, and shows it the way it needs to be. You have the support, you have the, the mentorship, you know, you have, uh, the team around you that makes you believe, hey, you know what, this is something that can happen, right? But, uh, of course, it doesn't happen without, uh, the excellent work of, of the directors. So on behalf of myself and my family, just want to thank all the directors that are, that are here today. Uh, also want to thank, uh, the staff that we have here, PD staff and all that. We got a good, good amount of folks that, that came today, uh, from the officers, uh, to our staff, uh, non-civilian and, and sworn, uh, from the time that we, we began this, uh, journey, it's never stopped. Uh, the vision is to continue with alignment with the city, with the strategic planning that, that, that we've had and the direction that, that we're going and, and the department's, uh, uh, ready to continue with that and the success of not only our agency, but the city as a whole. I think, uh, for myself, growing up here, uh, being from, uh, FAR community, graduating here from the, the PHG North Actually High School, uh, I can tell you that, uh, I've seen the tremendous growth that we've had within, within the, the years. Uh, met my wife and she kind of moved me, uh, to her hometown, uh, which is a little bit on the west side and been, been, since been trying to say, hey, when are, when are we coming back? But really never left the city. Uh, during this time, I guess, uh, next two years, what happened is I went to the academy and I said, hey, you know what, I want to serve in the community. I, that, you know, gave me the opportunity, you know, education as well. So nonetheless, I, I came back to the city of FAR that gave me this opportunity and since then I've been here, uh, all along. So, uh, in close, I just again, want to thank you for this tremendous opportunity. I can tell you that, uh, I'm here to continue to serve, uh, the community along with, uh, the leaders that, that we have here, uh, in the city. But most and foremost, uh, I'm here for our residents, right? I'm here for our businesses. I'm here for those visitors that we have and, and the, the growth that we've experienced here. And I think at one point, I think, uh, we might have about, I don't know, about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand at one time here in the city of FAR, uh, during, during the day. So it's a, it's a challenge, right? I think the infrastructure that we have with the interchange project and, and, and what we have going, uh, is something that, uh, you know, it's just going to attract more people here to the city of FAR and what we do. So, uh, that just, again, just tremendous thank yous and appreciation and, uh, I hope that, uh, you know, we just keep pushing forward, so.
Welcome, as chief. And, uh, from my perspective, I'm very, uh, glad, you know, that you stepped up to the plate. There's a lot of, uh, great leaders behind you and they're going to be looking up to you because they will be the next generation coming through. We expect that you will grow the rank and file, right, be a couple of two or three deep. That way people can always step up and get promoted and they have a, a plan for their professional growth. Uh, the professionalism you guys as, as a team, the team FAR and the police department is exceptional without question. It's, it's great and it's seen everywhere. But as a family, there's always change that happens and change is sometimes necessary to get to a higher plane. And this is what's happening today. And so we're delighted to see that happen. We, we are, I'm personally excited to see what you can do with this entire team. I know this, the police department is without question one of the best and is the best in the entire Rio Grande Valley. We have, we absolutely have the best officers and I'm very proud of what they've done. And every, every, every year gets better. And every leader that comes through and you're standing on the, on the shoulders of giants before you, remember that. It's a lot of people have been there before you and they set it up so you could succeed even better. So please make them and all of us proud.
I appreciate that, mayor. And, um, again, just, uh, ready to, uh, continue with the progress that we've, that we've been making and just keep, continue getting better. So, so appreciate it.
Anybody have any other comments before we vote?
Bienvenido a la familia.
Gracias.
That's chief.
Does it like to welcome you, chief? Uh, when you first got appointed, I didn't realize you were related to Marco. So, congratulations.
And that's a good thing.
Yeah, yeah.
My son's best friend, so one of the best friends. Congratulations, sir.
No, appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just for me, congratulations. I, I know you're gonna do a great job and, you know, teach your young officers, you know, uh, everything that you know and respect and everything that I've known about you. And, you know, you've been very respectful, very honest and very dedicated officer. So, uh, there's a lot of people behind you and anything we can do from the commission side, of course, you know, please, you know, we're very approachable. Let us know what we can do to help you make your life better.
Thank you, commissioner. Thank you.
Congratulations. And, uh, I know you're gonna be a great mentor for a lot of the the NOR officers and the other officers who have, where they can see what it, that the possibilities here in FAR, you can grow. One day, they'll have every opportunity to become chief of police also.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, commissioner. And that's, uh, true. I mean, the, the opportunity to grow here is with, is in FAR. So, thank you.
All right. Otherwise, uh, the motions have been done. Thank you, Mr. Carrillo. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Congratulations, sir.
Thank you, mayor. Appreciate it.
Chief, don't go anywhere. Yeah, and the bill will take a picture with you and your family if you don't mind. Okay. All right. No, we're, we're on nine, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
A, A, yes, nine A.
Nine.
Nine, nine A.
Correct. Contract and agreements, consideration in action of any on proposal for XO A and A Entertainment Company for road traffic, promotional, commercial route signs in Reynosa for eleven thousand dollars. The item supports economic vitality.
Would you approve?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Consideration in action of any authorized city manager to extend the, uh, supply contract for the purchase and delivery of fuel with Gold Star Petroleum, Inc., from Spring, Texas. This item supports, of course, infrastructure. Item nine B. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What does ultra-low sulfur diesel mean?
I mean, the diesel has low sulfur-
Yeah, I know what that means, but is that, is that means that this is better than the one I buy at the, at the gas station?
They're all like that now.
They're all like that now.
Okay, I thought maybe it was something different.
Okay, anything else? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Thank you. Ninety, consideration in action of any authorized city manager to extend the service contract for residential fiber installation labor services for teamfAR.net with JSJ Rodriguez Incorporated, DBA Telepro Communications from Mission, Texas, through the inter-local purchasing system, otherwise known as TIPS, tips cooperative, contract number two three zero one zero five. Item, of course, supports infrastructure.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Consideration, uh, item nine D, consideration in action of any authorized city manager to award a supply contract for the purchase and delivery of HMAC, cold mix and caliche to Frontera Materials Incorporated from Elsa, Texas. Item supports infrastructure.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Item, item nine E, consideration in action of any unauthorized city manager to extend the professional architectural service agreements with the firms currently on the city of FAR's rotational list. This item supports infrastructure.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, we are in, okay, nine M, consideration in action of any authorized city manager to extend the professional engineering service agreement with the firms currently on the city of FAR's rotational list. Item supports infrastructure.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Consider, uh, item nine G, consideration in action of any authorized city manager to extend the professional engineering service agreement for water and wastewater improvement projects with the firms currently on the city of FAR's rotation list. Item supports infrastructure.
So moved.
Second.
Any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Nine H, consideration in action of any authorized city manager to extend the professional surveying service agreements to the firms currently on the city of FAR's rotational list. This item supports infrastructure.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Nine I, consideration in action of any authorized city manager to enter into an agreement with the Grant Mercantile Agency for Emergency Medical Services, unpaid collection services. This item supports sound governance and physical sustainability.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Nine J, consideration in action of any ratifying interlocal agreement between the city of FAR, FAR Economic Development Corporation Two, and the FAR San Juan Alamo Independent School District for the use of land known as Los Conquistadores. This item supports QL, which is quality of life.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Nine K, consideration in action, consideration in action if any on ratifying interlocal agreement between the city of FAR and FAR San Juan Alamo Independent School District for broadband internet service. This item supports QL, quality of life.
Would you approve?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Nine L, consideration in action if any, ratifying First Amendment to lease and joint use management agreement between the city of FAR and FAR San Juan Alamo Independent School District. This item supports quality of life.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Nine M, consideration in action of any on adopting written findings as to the collection service contracts and approve a contingent fee contract with Purdue, Brandon, Fielder, Collins, and Mont, LLP pursuant to article one zero three point zero zero one of the Texas government code of criminal procedures. This item supports SG, sound governance and physical sustainability.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Oh, wait. We're in eight, we're in eight, don't we?
Three.
Three and eight. Three and eight, right?
Three and four. Three and four.
Three and four?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, so let's go to eight, uh, where is it? Oh, so eight B, consultation with the board of commissioners on the city governance organizational structure. This item supports SG, sound governance and physical sustainability. This is a request by our prosecutor, Patricia Rigidi, to discuss her performance, uh, in op- in open forum. So from my perspective, uh, counselor, Patricia Rigidi has done a good job. Uh, anybody else have any comments on performance?
Well, she's done a very, she's done a very good job.
Okay.
She's done a very good job. Okay.
I agree. She's done a good job. Uh, she's been there for us and, um, excellent, um, values, morals, and, uh, what she does.
Good. I agree. Ma'am, any, any comments?
I'd like to echo the commissions. I think, uh, Ms. Rigidi has served the, the commission, the city, and represented very well.
Good. Is this the next item?
No.
Okay, where are we? Next. Okay. Okay, we're on item three, public testimony? Mr. Chavez? Chavez?
Is he present? He left?
Okay. Uh, item four then. Item four, public hearings.
He's not present?
Is it Lupa Chavez we're talking about? Mr. Chavez?
Want me to go get him?
Mr. Chavez?
I'll go get him.
Okay, is that it? So we need a motion to adjourn?
Move our adjournment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. We are adjourned.